So, we acknowledge that the land upon which we gather is traditional onceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. So, called order, I just want to thank our economic development, tourism, and festivals and events staff. I was down to the 360, the Van Gogh 360-degree presentation. It's unbelievable. If you can go to it, go to it. It's going to be here for a month. It's spectacular. So, it was just a great show. And the 50 or so people that were there in the Delta Ballroom, wow, it's just really good show. Any declarations of conflict of interest? I think you have one under.
I have one, number four, 295 Kent Street.
And that's under planning?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's under planning there, Richard. Okay, approval of agenda.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Can we move Police Protective Services up to number one? The chief is in Quebec City right now at a police conference, and I know that he has a few things lined up for this evening. And I just thought that it'd be nice to be able to allow him to go deal with those meetings. So, if we can move up number one, it'd be great.
Any problem? No? Okay, so, 6.1 becomes 6.2, and 6.7 Protective and Emergency Services is 6.1. Is that all right, Counselor McLeod? Okay, Richard, do you have anything?
Yes, your worship. I have a request from the C A O that we consider a deferral of the finance resolution that speaks to the Enterprise Fleet Management proposal. She feels that she has information that she'd like to be here for that discussion if council would defer that resolution.
And, Richard, I know that she has been speaking with her legal counsel, David Houley, concerning a couple of questions that Counselor Duffy posed, and she has those answers, plus she has other information. But, as you know, she's home with COVID. She's not phoning in. I think she's watching it. And she would ask that we have a special meeting next week to deal with this and a couple of other issues. Counselor.
So, what information could she have that we don't already have? Because we've been dealing with this now eight times.
So, she has the answers, the legal responses to the questions that were asked by Counselor Duffy. I think it was question one about explaining the reasons for your voting yea or nay. And the second issue was to, was it through the appropriate committees that this followed the process? Is that correct, sir?
The finances terms of reference reflected their authority to review the vehicle leasing aspect of life prior to going to council.
And that's the reason for it. And again, what we're talking about is it will not affect what's already in the queue with Enterprise Fleet Management. It's just going forward. And I think with considering all the work that Donna put into it, I think that she would like to be part of the discussion.
So, just one more, your worship. I'm just trying to figure out on your request, you're looking to see who has the right to review it as far as public works or finance? Is that what you're asking, or what is it?
Thank you. I was questioning the terms of reference of the Finance Committee in comparison to the terms of reference of Public Works. Who had the strongest authority, I guess, for the lack of a better word, to be making decisions, I'm sorry, making a recommendation to council? In my humble opinion, it was the Public Works Department because within there they talk about, they supervise or overlook fleet management, and they also are responsible for purchasing equipment for not only Public Works but the hometown beautiful, or not the hometown, the urban beautification aspect of Public Works. And within the equipment, therein lies the vehicles such as the trucks and that. So, my position was that if anyone is going to make a recommendation to council, it should be Public Works, not Finance, because Finance doesn't, it's not really, they're allowed to make three recommendations on life for this council, i.e. to appoint lawyers, insurance companies, and that sort of thing, to rule or make recommendation on the acquisition or disposal of city lands. And the third one is to set a water and sewer rates. Those are all recommendations that the terms of reference of the Finance Committee has the authority to make recommendations to council. It doesn't mention anywhere in there, as it does in Public Works, about leasing vehicles or buying equipment or leasing equipment. In other words, they are more the, in my old job, we would call it the O P I, the Office of Primary Importance. Everybody has an interest in what goes on here, but there's always one committee has more of an interest than the other nine committees, because that's what they're created for, is to look after, for example, water and sewer, or parks and recreation, or police and protective services. It's more definitive of what Public Works is able to do versus the Finance Committee.
Counselor McLeod.
Out of respect for the decision of the C A O, I'll make a motion to defer until she's back next week.
Seconded, seconded, Counselor Ramsey. Question?
Question.
Questions on the floor. Who's in favor of the deferral? Please raise your hand. Okay, so it's Counselor McLeod, Counselor Yankoff, Counselor Rivard, Counselor Duran, Counselor Ramsey, Counselor Duffy, yep, and the Deputy Mayor Cody. Those against? Okay, Counselor Duffy, in favor or against? Counselor Bernard?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Seven, one. Okay, so it's deferred. Richard? We have the adoption of the previous draft minutes. So, you have regular monthly meeting July 11th, special meeting July 25th, public planning meeting July 26th. Motion to approve, moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor McLeod. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Business arising out of the minutes. Okay, seeing none, and we'll go rate to reports of committees. 6.1 Protective and Emergency Services Standing Committee, Counselor Rivera.
Thank you, your worship. So, Protective and Emergency Services Committee met July 26, 2022. The minutes are in your package. There are three resolutions for your consideration. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer. And I think we have Chief McConnell again on the line, and Deputy Chief Tim Amey here from Fire. So, thank you.
Any questions to his report? Okay. Richard, do you want to go with the first? You mic'd up?
Your worship, Protective and Emergency Services Resolution One, moved by Counselor Greg Rivard, seconded by Counselor Kevin Ramsey, resolved that the Public Works Manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any garbage and other materials or debris, clean up and properly dispose of same at the owner's expense at the following properties located at 40 Connolly Street, P I D number 358424, 38 Connolly Street, P I D number 358432, 36 Connolly Street, P I D number 358440, in accordance with the terms of the dangerous, hazardous, and unsightly bylaw of the city of Charlottetown.
Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Chief McConnell, this is one of these in-kind, and I think council had asked in the past that there be some additional information added to the package to support the in-kind asks. And I don't see anything in here now.
No, no, that's number one.
That's the second one. Sorry. Okay, never mind. I'm ready for the next question, though.
Okay. No, Counselor McLeod?
Good. Thank you very much, your worship. Thank you, Counselor Rivera, for your report. Just on this one, being a member of the Lions Club, I just want to say that the grass and everything has been cut, trimmed and everything up. I'm not sure what else is being done there, but it was a case of where it went to Iraq and whatnot. So, things kind of were delayed, but we're, I know, like, Habitat's coming to take all the house belongings and things like that. So, I don't know if this needs to be done now, but I guess it really doesn't matter such. But the grass and everything has been trimmed up. I can tell you that much. The property's looking much better than what it was. But, because we were struggling to find someone that would come in and cut grass, I don't know. But anyway, we did find someone, and it is done. So, just, I'm not sure. Just more information and anything. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor McLeod. So, the resolution can still apply here because we had, I think, a rule in place that was like, I think, a year and a half, that in the event that it happens again, that we can follow up with this resolution. So, you know, if the work's been done, great, we won't follow up right now. But just in the next year and a half, instead of, you know, if it does get bad again, then we're not back here again.
Okay. Questions called. Thank you, Counselor Ramsey. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight, zero.
Protective and Emergency Services Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Greg Rivard, seconded by Counselor Kevin Ramsey, resolved that the Public Works Manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any garbage and any other materials or debris, clean up and properly dispose of same. The city will be in-kind responsible for the expenses at the following location, 153 Mount Edward Road, P I D number 390229 Christian Reform Church, in accordance with the terms of the dangerous, hazardous, and unsightly bylaw of the city of Charlottetown.
Do you want to speak to it, counsel? You're all right?
I mean, I would ask, I would ask maybe the chief add a bit of background to this one, just because it's in-kind. I know the council has requested in the last couple of meetings that anything in-kind that has a little more support to it before we, so if the chief wants to speak to it, that'd be great. It's up to council.
Your worship, Chair, I have to apologize. Certainly, council was clear on the need for additional information about those in-kind services. And I did give direction to our bylaw enforcement officers to provide that. And I apologize for not having it present in the package. And we'll ensure that any further we'll have that. And, you know, this particular circumstance is in relation to some encampments that are located there. And again, no fault of the property owners. We feel that, you know, this type of support, you know, is certainly required, and that's what we put it for.
Okay, good. Question was called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight, zero.
Protective and Emergency Services Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor Greg Rivard, seconded by Counselor Kevin Ramsey, resolved that the Public Works Manager be authorized to remove any garbage and other materials or debris and clean up and properly dispose of same at the owner's expense at the following properties located at 14 Orla Barre Street, P I D number 362657, in accordance with the terms of the dangerous, hazardous, and unsightly bylaw of the city of Charlottetown.
Thank you, Richard. Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight, zero. Thank you. Anything else, Counselor? Counselor, oh, go ahead, Counselor Duffy. Can you just, just put your mic on there, Counselor?
I'm a little late with this, but I just wanted to bring up tonight under the Protective Services, and Counselor Rivera kind of caught me off guard here coming first when he was destined to be number nine. Anyway, after speaking last council meeting and looking around a couple of wards, my own included, I see that the city, and I'll make this fairly short, I see that the city does a great job of cutting grass and moving garbage and other debris left by overnight campers and that sort of thing. But I think what we're missing is the authority, not the authority, but the capabilities or the manpower, staff power to go out and, and maybe it's not even our field. I'm talking about dilapidated buildings. We have a lot. I jumped in the car yesterday morning about 10:30 and took 10 or 15 minutes to drive around my ward, Ward One, Ward Four also. And within 10 minutes, I have eight or nine addresses here that badly, and I mean badly, need to be fixed up. Either it has to be torn down, or fixed up, or at a minimum sealed in a proper way that is presentable to the neighborhood. I really feel sorry for the people that live next door to some of these. These are, these, these things are gone way and beyond. So, I know that's not the, I know Todd, our bylaw enforcement officer, and the inspectors over at the fire department, and the building inspectors down at the, at the planning area, they're all really, really busy. And I don't know how we're going to handle this, but it's expensive. It's either expensive for the owner, it's expensive for the city to do it, but we do bill back to get our money back. So, I just want to go on record that on my street alone, for example, there's one individual, I will not even give the address out of respect for the resident, he has got more pallets in his backyard than I think Kanta Packers ever had. It's just, it's terrible what the neighbors have to put up with. But we're not making any headway. We've been after him for, what, three years now? And I was told today at one time, some city employees, and they ended up helping him move things around, but never took anything off the property, just moved, helped him move, relocate things. Or like, it's crazy. And people are getting fed up. They're paying top property value, you know, taxes, you know, in the, in the area. And they look out the window, and I'm not kidding you, the pallets are maybe six or eight feet high, covering the whole backyard. And these people shouldn't have to put up with it. Anyway, if I could, I'd like to pass this on maybe to the Deputy Fire Chief or Acting Chief. Those are the addresses. Okay, thank you, your worship.
Counselor Duffy, I agree with you. And you're right. It's not just one property. There are many properties in all different wards.
It's out of control.
And I believe that the chief has heard you loud and clear. So, Chief Brad McConnell, I'm sure, will have this on the agenda for the next meeting. And Acting Chief, Fire Chief Tim Amey's here. So, he's under, getting briefed on what's happening with the, with these properties. Counselor Yankoff?
Thank you, your worship. And I should have brought this up when the report was first presented. I just wanted to ask a question. I sent an email on it shortly after the Pride Parade, but I didn't get a response. And I noticed in the minutes, we did have the aid officers on duty. aid officers on duty for the Pride Parade, which was wonderful. But I was in that parade, and I noticed that at the intersections, the police were allowing traffic through and stopping the parade. I know that that does not happen with the Christmas Parade. It does not happen with the Cold Couple Parade. So, I was a bit perplexed of why we would stop in, you know, in 95-degree temperature and allow a vehicle through when the Pride Parade route had been published prior to that. So motorists would know where and when they could drive. And since I didn't get an answer by email, I'm just curious if, if we have a reason why the rules and the regulations are different for that parade.
Counsel Rivera?
Anyone can answer that. Thank you.
I think that's the question for the chief.
Chief?
Your Worship, Counsel, Chair, and Counsel Yankoff. You know, certainly, any of those events are organized, you know, through our community policing section, our traffic enforcement officers, but also the organizers themselves to find a balance of, you know, traffic enforcement and safety. Last year, you know, was different from this year. We increased our presence of officers in key intersections. And we really have to rely on the officers on the ground to make key decisions at key times. You know, keeping in mind, you know, safety is at the foremost of their decision-making. And I had every confidence that that was. I'm not aware of any incidents. And certainly, it's a, you know, one of our things we strive for is to find a balance of the impact of these events on the community in general. So, you know, we have to certainly rely on the officers on the ground, and certainly, again, keeping safety as, you know, at the forefront of that. But in trust, in trust on the officers on the ground.
Counsel Yankoff, at the last Standing Committee meeting for Police and Emergency Services, Greg, Counsel Rivera, you recall that I received the email from the person you received it from, and I did forward it on to Deputy Police Chief Jennifer McCarron, because she did provide some information at our last meeting. So, I think Chief or Counsel Rivera, if we can just follow up to find out if her response is going forward. Is that all right, Counsel Rivera? Good. Okay. Counsel Yankoff? Good. Yeah. So, is that it? Okay. Thank you. Acting Chief Amey, thank you very much. Okay. Planning?
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Planning and Heritage Committee did not meet in August. Therefore, no reports. The Planning Board met on August 2. Copies of the Planning Board minutes are there for your perusal, along with the public meeting minutes and reports. The Heritage Board did not meet in July, and the Design Review Board did meet on Monday, July 18. And copies of that report are in the package for consideration. And the Affordable Housing Committee did not meet in July. Therefore, there are no reports. I have eight resolutions for council's consideration, and I believe there's three first readings and one second reading. I'll do my best to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions? Counsel Yankoff?
Thank you. Question for the Chair or Mr. Forbes. Received a call from a resident who has been waiting several months for a permit to build a couple of properties in the 500-lot area. And she has been waiting for quite some time for some communication around that. And of course, we all know how busy you are in your department, and I understand that. But there is some frustration out there. That, that shouldn't really be on the backs of those, that homeowners that are trying to build. And I just wondered if you have any update on, on if communication can be speedier, or what your thoughts are on that. I just, the resident asked me to pass it along, and I'm doing that.
Mr. Chair, do you want?
Yeah, thank you very much. Since it's operational, I'll let Mr. Forbes speak on that. Thank you.
Your Worship, maybe if Counsel Yankoff just sends me an email in regard to what the property is, I'll look into it. You know, we are busy over there. But again, things need to move in a certain sequence. And, you know, we just can't, like, I don't know the circumstances there, but we should be communicating with people as regularly as possible. Just update them in regard to when they should expect something to occur. So, you know, maybe if you just, you either call me tomorrow or send me an email, I'll look into it, and I'll follow up with you. Yep.
And Counsel Yankoff, I know you're a hard-working member of the Planning Board. If you look at the back of your package, you can see that construction bill permits are at $143 million as of the end of July. And last year, it was $101 million. So, I know, Alex, it's a lot of work going on down there, and it's been very, very busy. So, it's, it's all to continue to remind or communicate with you.
And Your Worship, you know, we, thank you for, because in the budget this year, there were two positions. We will be hopefully interviewing for at least one of those positions soon. And the faster we can get some other bodies online, the faster things will move. And it's, it's just a timing issue. But, but again, that doesn't preclude the fact that things need to continue to move. And I will try to endeavor to make sure that that happens. Thank you, Your Worship.
You want to read the first resolution then, Alex? Or sorry, Richard?
Your Worship, Planning Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Alana Yankoff, resolved that the request for the following major variances to reduce the minimum lot frontage of 82 feet to approximately 50 feet, and reduce the minimum side yard setback requirement of 9.8 feet to approximately 3.9 feet, and minor variance to reduce the minimum lot area requirement of 1,237.9 square feet per unit to approximately 1,232 square feet per unit, to permit four apartment units within the existing dwelling at 46-48 Victoria Street, PID number 353466, be approved, subject to the following: no expansion of the existing dwelling envelope, in conformance with Section 46 General Provisions for Parking of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, and three new dwelling units designed and renovated in accordance with the National Building Code requirements identified in the Building and Development Permit Review Process.
Questions called. All, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero, Richard.
Planning Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Alana Yankoff, resolved that the major variance request to reduce the minimum front yard setback requirement of 19.7 feet to 13.5 feet, in order to permit a 9-foot by 14-foot, 126 square feet, addition to the existing single detached dwelling located at 80 Green Street, PID number 354175, be approved.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero.
Planning Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Alana Yankoff, resolved that the major variance request to decrease the minimum, minimum lot area requirement for a 12-unit townhouse use in R3 Zone from 2,640 square meters, 28,416.7 square feet, to 2,387.6 square meters, 25,700.4 square feet, and decrease the rear yard setback requirement from 7.5 meters, 24.6 feet, to 3.6 meters, 11.8 feet, in order to allow for six additional townhouse dwelling units on the property located at 16 May Point Road, PID number 777920, be approved.
Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay.
Planning Resolution Number Four, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Alana Yankoff, resolved that the major variance request to reduce the required flange yard setback from 7.6 meters, 24.9 feet, to approximately 1.281 meters, 4.9 feet. Apologies.
Counsel McLeod has to remove himself. He's in conflict of interest. Richard, can you just turn over, please? Thank you.
Yes, Your Worship. Planning Resolution Number Four, moved by someone other than Counselor Terry McLeod.
Counsel McLeod can't move that way. We have to get another mover.
Also, in planning...
But he has to, we have to get someone from the floor. Yep. No, it's all right. For a mover or a secondary, it's all right to get someone else from the floor. Yeah.
Thank you, Counsel Durrang.
Thank you, Counsel Durrang.
Planning Resolution Number Four, moved by Counselor Bob Durrang, seconded by Counselor Alana Yankoff, resolved that the major variance request to reduce the required flange yard setback from 7.6 meters, 24.9 feet, to approximately 1.281 meters, 4.9 feet, in order to allow, in addition to the existing School of Reforming Arts at 295 Kent Street, PID number 344911, be approved.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Seven zero.
Let him back in. You're welcome back in. There's a delay on the video. Planning Resolution Number Five, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Alana Yankoff, resolved that the request to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from low-density residential R2 Zone to the institutional zone for 93 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373092, and 95 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373100, and amend Appendix A future land use map of the official plan from low-density residential to institutional for 93 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373092, and 95 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373100, and consolidate 93 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373092, and 95 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373100, with that of the UPEI main campus located at 560 University Avenue, PID number 373162, be approved.
Well done there, Richard.
Your Worship?
Counsel, Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you, Counsel McLeod. This was asked at the public meeting, but I just wondering, when we do that, if it's approved or not, do we, is there going to be that third lane to turn right on the University Avenue? I don't know if that's a public works, or is that still in the planning? Because once these homes are removed, there's a plan to have that third lane by Blaze Pizza, you know, to turn right to go to University Avenue. I'm just wondering, is that still in the works?
Thank you very much, Counsel Ramsey, for your question. And yes, that's all taken into, under consideration that the right lane will still be, will be installed when it's the time. Yeah. Thank you.
Worship?
Yes, Counsel Duffy. Go ahead there, sir.
Not to be a nitpicker, but the last, the last PID number, Mr. McEwen said 373162, and it's 373126.
Very good there, Counsel Duffy. That's going on the public record.
Thank you, Counsel Duffy.
Did you get?
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero.
Richard? Now, don't miss a number.
Planning Resolution Number Six. That was Planning Resolution Number Six, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Alana Yankoff, resolved that the request to amend the development concept plan and amend Appendix B Comprehensive Development Area, CDA, parcels and permitted uses pertaining to 50 Cumberland Street, PID number 679381, for the construction of a new industrial equipment building and the demolition of the existing steam plant be approved, subject to the condition that the building elevation be approved through the design review process prior to the issuance of a building and development permit.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Eight zero.
Planning Resolution Number Seven, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Alana Yankoff, resolved that the proposed amendments to the zoning and development bylaw as it pertains to Section 4.3, dealing with swimming pools, to permit property owners who shall install a certified pool cover, the option to waive the requirement to erect a fence around a pool, be denied, Option 4 of the Planning Staff Report.
Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, I just want to recognize Alex Forbes for the job he did at the public meeting. This has been around, as everybody knows, since 2020. It keeps coming up. So, it was good to have the public meeting, get the public input. There was a lot of good information from that. I know there's been some concerns about why did it go to a public meeting? But I think with the, with the ask that came to the city, through a number of us selected officials, and from the new technology, it was nice that Alex, you did a very good job putting, putting the whole package together. So, I, I think that the Planning Department itself and their manager needs some, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah. And again, Alex, I echo what, echo what the Counsel for more attendance stated. The information you provided, plus, it was a public issue, and we're committed to consult the public, and that's what we did. There was a duly constituted resolution passed by the Planning Board that executed that public consultation, was passed by council unanimously. So, when we can get public input from whoever, whatever, it's always good for going forward. Question? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero.
Your Worship, Planning Resolution Number Eight, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Alana Yankoff, be it resolved that the request to amend Appendix A future land use map of the official plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential for a portion of 1B Palmer's Lane, PID number 275735, total area of 457 square meters. An Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from single detached residential R-1S Zone to medium-density residential R3 Zone for a portion of 1B Palmer's Lane, PID number 275735, total area 457 square meters, and consolidate a portion of 1B Palmer's Lane, PID number 275735, with 1 Palmer's Lane, PID number 275313, subject to a final pinned survey plan, in order to construct a 12-unit apartment building, be approved.
Counsel Durrang, and Counsel Bernard, you can speak to it. Counsel Durrang?
Thank you, Your Worship. You know, I think this has been on the docket there for a few months, and a number of residents have called with their concerns about the driveway going on to McKay Drive, and just the whole aspect of combining these two properties and the height of the building. I know the height is allowed. There was just a lot of concerns about it. Putting three more units in the corner, traffic would, would be an issue brought forward by concerns. And I know, I go through the planning report, and it's very well documented. You know, they, they don't see the traffic being a problem. But, you know, the residents, you know, they, they have their own thoughts on that stuff. So, I mean, it's a good development. I think it's an improvement in the area. But I, I can't support it because a lot of the residents have asked me not to. So, thank you for giving the opportunity to talk about it.
Thank you, Counsel. Questions called. Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. All those against? So, seven to one, Counsel Durrang opposed, and Counselors Twill McCabe absent. Do you have most readings?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, official plan PH-OPA.1, to adopt the official plan amendment PH-OPA.1-033, the land use for 93 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373092, and 95 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373100, as shown on Appendix A, future land use map of the City of Charlottetown official plan, is designated as institutional, hereby excluding it from its former designation hereby excluding it from its former designation of low-density residential. Be it resolved that the official plan amendment PH-OPA.1-033, as it pertains to 93 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373092, and 95 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373100, as attached, be adopted. Moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Alana Yankoff.
Shall it pass?
Zoning and Development Bylaw PH-ZD.2, to adopt bylaw PH-ZD.2-064, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw for 93 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373092, and 95 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373100, from the low-density residential R2 zone to the institutional zone. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, as it pertains to 95 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373092, and 95 Belvedere Avenue, PID number 373100, as attached, be read first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council. Moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Alana Yankoff.
Shall it pass?
Yes, official plan zoning and development bylaw, sorry, no, no official plan piece to it, but the zoning and development bylaw to adopt bylaw PH-ZD.2-065, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw by amending the existing development concept plan and Appendix B Comprehensive Development Area Parcels and Permitted Uses for the construction of a new industrial equipment building and the demolition of the existing steam plant as it pertains to the property located at 50 Cumberland Street, PID number 679381. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, as it pertains to 50 Cumberland Street, PID number 679381, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council. Moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Alana Yankoff.
Shall it pass? Give me this a second time, Richard. Does this, go through the second reading?
No, that was first reading for that one.
Okay.
Official plan PH-OPA.1, to adopt the official plan amendment PH-OPA.1-032, the land use for a portion of 1B Palmer's Lane, PID number 275735, as shown on Appendix A future land use map of the City of Charlestown official plan is designated as medium-density residential, hereby excluding it from its former designation of low-density residential. Be it resolved that the official plan amendment PH-OPA.1-032, as it pertains to a portion of 1B Palmer's Lane, PID number 275735, as attached, be adopted. Moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe. Sorry, and Alana Yankoff.
Can you change that, Richard?
Can change that.
Doing a good job, Richard's very efficient. Only one mistake so far.
That one pass? Zoning and Development Bylaw PH-ZD.2, to adopt bylaw PH-ZD.2-60, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw for a portion of 1B Palmer's Lane, PID number 275735, from the single detached residential R1-S zone to the medium-density residential R3 zone. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, as it pertains to a portion of 1B Palmer's Lane, PID number 275735, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council. Moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Alana Yankoff.
Okay. Shall it pass? Okay. Those contrary, Council Duron, seven to one. So one more, Richard.
One more, a second reading. Zoning and Development Bylaw PH-ZD.2, to adopt bylaw PH-ZD.2-062, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw by amending the existing development concept plan, development agreement, and Appendix B Comprehensive Development Area, parcels, and permitted uses in order to construct a 5,000-square-foot addition with revised terms and conditions for the expansion of the existing retail area as it pertains to the property located at 15 St. Dunston Street, PID number 1075993. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, as it pertains to 15 St. Dunston Street, PID number 1075993, as attached, was read and approved a first time on July 11th, 2022. Be it resolved that said bylaw be read a second time and approved. Moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Alana Yankoff.
Shall it pass? Pass, eight zero.
Be it resolved that said bylaw be adopted. Moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Alana Yankoff.
Shall it pass? Pass. Okay. Is that it, Councilor?
That concludes my report, thank you.
Council McLeod, again, thank you very much. And Alex, thank you, and the staff there down at Planning, Development, and Heritage for a great job.
Thank you very much.
So next report is Council Ramsey? I think.
Thank you, your worship. Economic Development and Tourism and Events Management Department. Where's all my minutes here, folks? We met on July 20th. The minutes are in your package. The Earth Advisory Board has not met since the last meeting of council. There are no resolutions, just a few highlights, your worship, if I may. Staff are currently, are currently working with health, with the Health Recruitment and Retention Division of, of the Provincial Department of Health and Wellness to support missions and efforts to recruit medical staff to Charlestown. The other thing is, events hosting was a huge success, or, I got a sore throat, was in Charlestown this weekend, yesterday. The city hosted an international soccer match before a fantastic crowd of 1,500 fans. The, the Charlestown Busker Festival also saw strong crowds all weekend. Uh, Council McCabe is, uh, is the chair, and she's away in Niagara with her children, are playing in Canada, Canada games. So she's not here at this time, and we wish her and her family all the best, and, and hope they come back with the gold. Natal Day weekend celebrations took place over a week ago, and they were a great, great success. And special thanks to councilors and staff who all volunteered through the weekend. And lastly, as you mentioned earlier, your worship, before our meeting started, Van Gogh was now open at the PEI, PEI Commendative Center. I also seen it. It's fantastic. Anybody who worked there in the public, or in council, or in staff, go see it. It's well worth it. It's beautiful. Any questions, we're certainly trying to answer.
And Council Ramsey, it complements the public artwork on the west side of the Charlestown Fire Hall, Station One, fire, uh, the west side of the financial building on Kent Street, and I believe, Laurel, in front of the Charlestown Cinemas. Unbelievable. Any questions? In front of the Charlestown Cinemas down in King Street. It's really, it's unbelievable. City's looking great, Laurel Lee. And thank you, Laurel Lee, lots of compliments from the Parkdale Sherwood Lions Club for the great work you and Charlotte, and Wayne Long did, uh, Wayne Long, uh, down at Confederation Landing for the Charlestown birthday party. Good time. Okay, thank you, Laurel. So environment sustainability, is that you, Councilor?
Uh, it is now, yep.
I think it is. It's your show.
Council Twill is missing again, so I'll take the committee. Your worship, the Environment Sustainability Committee met July 20th, 2022, and the Mayor's Task Force on Active Transportation met on July 19th. Minutes are included in the package. There is one resolution for council consideration. Your worship, just some updates, um, on the transit. July 2022 was the best month on record for transit in Charlestown, your worship, with 77,523 passenger fares. Year-to-date ridership is 402,328 for 2022, compared to 254,544 in 2021. So, good to see transit is really ramping up, your worship, and obviously the high price of gas has helped fuel that, but a lot more people are getting comfortable in the scheduling and, and using the transit. So that's good. The other thing, your worship, is over 550 Charlestown homes have signed up for the SWITCH program as of July 20th. Program has seen over $1 million in projects completed. SWITCH is proving to be a very successful way for the city to impact energy savings and greenhouse gas reductions. So, your worship, just a couple of, uh, highlights, and if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Any questions? We got our active manager here, she's ready for the questions. Richard, got a resolution?
Yes. Environment and Sustainability Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor Terry Bernard, seconded by Councilor Greg Rivera. Resolved that the contract for CBCL for Design and Engineering of the Charlestown Perimeter Highway Active Transportation Corridor be increased from $90,540 plus applicable taxes to $1,013,40 plus applicable taxes to accommodate Phase III of the project, and that the additional expenses be included in the approved 2021, 2022 city capital budget for this project with no increases required. And further, that the city use the approved funds from the PEI Active Transportation Fund towards these additional costs, which are cost shared 50/50 with the province of PEI.
Counselor Bernard, do you have a question?
I do. Maybe Jessica can answer it, I don't know. I thought there was some discussion there that the province may not be paying the 50/50. Do you know anything about that, Jessica?
So the design work we're committed to, so it's going forward after the design.
So this is just for the design?
This is just to complete the design work.
Okay, thank you.
It's $113,040.
For three phases, this is the final phase.
Yeah, no, it's great. Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero. Any more, Richard, is that it? Okay. Strategic planning, that's Council Ramsey. I'm not going ahead anywhere, no. That's you, Council Ramsey. Thank you, sir.
Thank you again, your worship. We met on Tuesday, August 2nd. The draft minutes are in your package. The Youth Engagement Advisory Committee did not meet since last council. There is one resolution for your consideration. Any questions? We're willing to answer them, thank you.
One resolution, your worship. Strategic Priorities and Intergovernmental Cooperation, Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor Kevin Ramsey, seconded by Councilor Bob Duron. Resolved that report SI01-0725-2022-OS be received for information, and that council accept the strategic plan 2022 to 2026, a community for everyone.
Wow, okay. Counselor Ramsey?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I would, uh, certainly like to thank the CAO, is it Donald, Dell, and Carly, for all the work that they are doing this. And if this gets approved, it's like they're already going to kick rate in right away. It's a four-year program, something that we asked for, and the residents were asking for, and city council was asking for. So I think it's fantastic, thank you.
Agree with you fully there, Council Ramsey, thank you very much. Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero. For the Community for Everyone Resolution. Okay. Okay. Finance, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, your worship. Our committee met, and the report's in your package. The resolution has been deferred here tonight, but there is a profit and loss statement included in the report for council to review. So there are no resolutions, your worship. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you for the financial update there, deputy. Great to see that. Looks pretty good, too. No questions? Okay. Next report. I have Counselor Yankoff. Counselor Yankoff.
Thank you, your worship. The Human Resource, Communication, and Administrative Committee last met on August the 2nd. The minutes of the meeting are included in your package. There are two resolutions for your consideration, and I can do my best to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Counsel Bernard, are you still on, or? Can you, are you going to ask, okay. Counsel Duron.
Thank you, worship. I don't know where to start. I have, I have four questions I'd like asked. Last month, uh, in the council chamber here, I asked, um, I asked for a legal opinion, um, to see if our accounting firm, is there any conflict in the upcoming investigation or audit? I asked that. The next day, I emailed our mayor, CAO, and I had to respect the Chair of Finance as well. And I got a response back that we're looking into it. Here we are, two weeks later, and I, I don't have an update. I, I don't have any, you know, it shouldn't take four or five weeks for a legal opinion. I just wanted to know, you know, are, are we allowing our accounting firm to be involved in this? And with a legal opinion, it could say yes or no, and then that would stop the process. But if we, if we continue to not ask the question or allow them to, to do the work, I, I think it would be flawed. So, you know, again, here I am, asking, are, are we going to be able, or am I going to get a legal opinion if they're allowed to be involved?
Counselor Yankoff?
Thanks, Counsel Duron, and great question. And I do recall that you had asked that last two weeks ago, and we do still haven't answered. I see that, I know Donna's not well. We, perhaps our legal department can, um, address this question and give us a timeline so that we have an answer before this time, the next time that Counsel Duron needs to ask again, because it, it is a valid question, and I think he's got the right to ask that question and get an, and get an answer.
Counsel Yankoff, fully agree with you. Just remember that this is a third-party financial review we're looking at. So it will not be our, it will not be our auditing firm, MRSB, doing that. Someone else will be coming in to do that. And that's what Donna, our CAO, was planning to do this evening, but because she is down with COVID, she wanted this whole issue delayed until our special meeting, not at the end of the month, but hopefully next week. Counsel Bernard, and then Counsel Duron.
Thank you, worship. No, I was just going to basically say the same thing. We had a meeting scheduled for 4:30 before 5:00 tonight, a special meeting. And I understand.
Thank you, Worship. No, I was just gonna basically say the same thing. We had a meeting scheduled for 4:30 before 5:00 tonight, a special meeting, and my understanding was that that was part of the agenda. So I think, I believe she had an update, it's just that she was, she's been down with COVID. So my understanding is that will be postponed until next week when she's better.
Counsel Dron?
I didn't, I didn't read into that myself, you know, when you look at the closed session agenda, that, that's not on it, so, you know, I'm just looking, I'm just looking for, for an opinion, right? So that, that was my one of the four questions. So if we can look into that and get back to you, but, you know, you, everybody says we'll get back to you, but we never do, right? So that's, that's the frustrating, so.
But Counsel Dron, just before you go on to your third and fourth question, there, it has been difficult to find a third-party financial reviewer because of the, you're dealing with a profession that is looking into one of his or her colleague's work, and sometimes, as Richard can tell you, for an engineer to look into another engineer's work, it's not, it's not easy to find someone to do that review. So Donna does have a path forward, and she wanted to make that known tonight, but it just couldn't be possible with COVID-19. And she did wanna phone in because she is dealing with this in a very serious matter, or very serious way with her COVID-19. So I, I respect that, and you will, you will get answers to it. Your third and fourth question?
So that kind of wraps into my fourth question. You know, at last month, we, we were discussing when we, an auditor or investigative person would be in place, and we were led to believe that maybe by Friday. So I guess now, the way you're talking, it's hard to find someone, so that's gonna be delayed, is that?
No, she, Counsel Yankoff and I, again, she would, would prefer to make that news or that information known when she's here at the next special meeting. And we wanna have the, we're not waiting until the fourth Monday of this month for that special meeting. We wanna have it as soon as she's well enough to do it.
All right.
Is that all right? And again, it's a third-party, I think we were getting a little confused with third-party auditor. It's not. It's a third-party financial reviewer. Someone said to me at the Emancipation Day event last week, why are you getting MRSB to do the audit on your own auditors? And I said, no, we're not doing that. We're trying to find someone from outside to come in and do a review. So that's what she's been doing, and it's been a difficult path forward. Now, we didn't go to an open bid on it because it was just a matter of trying to find someone who is professional and would be qualified as a CPA, Certified Public Account.
Okay. That, that certainly, you know, we just gotta keep this going, right? Like, you know, it's kinda been off the rails, or for my information purposes, when people ask me, I, I just say, well, I don't know. You know, we're supposed to have it in place, but I guess if it's that hard to get someone to do that, then, you know, when someone asks, I'll, I'll be able to say, okay, there's a delay right now, so we're, we're trying, or we're actively seeking someone. So I, I can say that. The next, and these, these are, you know, I know it has nothing to do with, with human rights, but the question comes to me all the time, and, and then I, alls I can say is I can ask it. You know, we were recently, there was a, a director appointed in, in the corporation, and it comes to me, like, I, I probably get five or six calls, well, I would've been interested in that job. How come it didn't go out to, you know, a, a job application so I could submit my resume? I just said, look, I'll, I'll ask the question, right? We, we were just told the person was hired, and, you know, there was no interview process, or, you know, we're, we're talking about policy and procedure, and it seems like we take a step forward and then we're, we're backtracking a bit. So I just, I don't know how this happened, or, or why, why a job posting wasn't presented and then, you know, the, the respected applicants could apply. So I don't know, like, what, what do I ask, you know, the Chair to look into that? Is it administration, you know, does administration have the authority to do that? Like, I, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Just, again, back to your fourth question. MRSB auditors for the city of Charlatan will present their information, or what they've collected over the last several years they've done the audit, to a third-party financial reviewer. You got, you understand that, right? So that, that will take place.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll have news within the next week or at the next special meeting. So, that, again, to clarify, MRSB will not be doing the review.
I accept that.
I know, but I, it's, it's.
We've moved on from that.
I know, but I just wanna clarify.
Okay.
Question five, Counsel Yankoff, do you wanna answer it?
If our, if our HR manager was here, they could probably have answered this a little bit better, or, or Ms. Waddell. But to my understanding, and correct me, anyone here, if I'm wrong, this is not a permanent position. This is a contract. This is just a contract. So when it comes to contracts, the, the policy and the procedure has been followed. However, if this position ever became a permanent, then it would have to go out to the public and follow our hiring policies and procedures. So it is just, it is just a contract, and I believe it's, is it twelve months?
I believe eighteen.
Eighteen months.
Maximum.
But if you need any other additional information, I can pass it on to our acting manager of HR.
Who's that?
Autumn?
Emily McLaughlin.
Emily.
Okay, so a contract like that, that can just be, what, a CAO would just say, okay, we're gonna submit a contract position and, and just give the position to somebody without, without any interview or hiring process?
It's, it's an operational matter. We, the, the committee had no part of it.
No, and I understand the committee, because the council didn't either, right?
No.
So they asked me, how did this happen? Well, I don't know.
I think that this is a, a question for our CAO. I, I do believe that the CAO's office has a budget, and this was, from my understanding, from an operational perspective, she, she was using money that was within her budget to use for, for these, these types of contracts. However, I can have that clarified for you, because I'm just, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent as this is fully operational.
Sure. And I understand that, and that, that'd be appreciated. So when we're into contracts, that goes into my last question. And I, and I know the last CAO, you know, we, we received, I had asked for the contract, and, and I, I wasn't given it at the time, when I, when I did ask for it, and then, then we, we were able to be involved and, and receive the contract a couple of weeks before he, he decided to leave. But with this current CAO, like, when I get the email today that she's sick, you know, I'm, I'm worried, okay, what happens if, if she doesn't complete?
The system has detected that a few lines are still connected to the conference and will attempt to disconnect them. If you wish to remain in the conference, please press bar one, fifteen.
This is not for me, and she leaves. Is, is the city corporation, you know, required to pay a certain amount of severance? And again, you know, people ask me, well, what, what does she get? I have no idea. I don't know the terms of the contract, and I think, you know, it would be, it would be a good thing if, if council knew this, because the way we're talking, if, if there's not gonna be a CAO in place until maybe the new council, you know, what, what is the package, or what are the taxpayers on the hook for? So it's just a little bit of information that, you know, I'm, I'm frustrated, because when somebody asks me, I, I have no, no answer to.
Yeah, so just to clarify, Donna Waddell was not self-appointed by Philip Brown. Council voted on that, and it was a ten-to-one vote, so it, I wanna clarify that, and for.
What, what did you just say?
Philip Brown was self, self-appointed by me.
I never said.
No, I know, you didn't say that, but that was, that was what was stated publicly, so just wanted to clarify that. There was a vote of council.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, so when we talk about the CAO and her, the replacement of her former CAO, all this will be in that package that she was gonna present tonight along with other items. But we'll have to leave it for the special meeting, and you'll see the contract and everything else that pertains.
Yeah. Your speaker.
I can tell you this much, the work she's done to this point, Donna Waddell, has been above excellent. She's working very close with staff, and she's working very close with the community, and I believe there's a very good rapport of collaboration, cooperation between her and staff, the community. So I, I really thank her for the work, and I'm glad we had an opportunity to bring her in as soon as we did.
And I'm not, I'm not even questioning any of that stuff. Not, not one iota. I'm just, you know, it's in the details, right? So if I'm lacking information, I'm just asking for, maybe all of council could be made aware of this. And when, when you say it was gonna come forward, when I look at the, the closed agenda, I didn't see any of this stuff. That's why I asked about it, right?
What was on the closed agenda? Human resource matter, correct?
No.
Four thirty? For four thirty's meeting?
Number three, A? I'm looking at the closed session, I guess.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's what I'm looking at. Where, where's the other?
No, that, that was gonna be discussed at the meeting. There was not a lot of information in the agenda, because we wanted to deal with it before the public meeting that we're holding right tonight at five o'clock.
Well, I, I, I didn't, this is all I have, right? I don't have that information. Like I said, you know, if this was all given to us, then I wouldn't be asking these questions.
No, no, your questions are very.
Perfect, yeah. Just like I said, if I get the answers to the questions, then that'll be great. That's all I want. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dron, and I've made a note of your five questions, so we'll make sure that those are answered when we have that meeting. Okay, thank you.
Richard, can you read? Thank you. Read the first resolution.
Human Resources Communication and Administration Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Mike Duffy. Resolve that the city of Charlatan repeal the existing telecommuting policy and replace it with the draft amended telecommuting policy as per the attached documents effective August 8th, 2022.
Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero, Richard, read the next one.
Human Resources Communication and Administration Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Mike Duffy. Resolve that the city of Charlatan repeal the existing flexible hours of work policy and replace it with the draft amended flexible work, hours of work policy as per the attached documents effective August 8th, 2022.
Okay, question?
I have a question for you, Counsel.
Go right ahead, sir, and Counsel Yankoff's here to answer.
Report, Counsel Yankoff. So is there many changes in this, Counsel Yankoff? I have both copies there. I'm just trying, I don't.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, okay, now as you, yeah, there is two. Okay, no, I'm good. I just wasn't sure if I had something to refer to here. Okay, thank you.
Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero. That's your report, Counsel Yankoff?
I.
Just.
I do have.
Hold on.
Okay, council advisory committee met on August the 8th. The, the minutes are in your package. We have four resolutions. They're really just a few housekeeping issues around the terms of, of some of our standing committees. So if you have any questions, I can do my best to answer those for you. Thank you.
Counsel Yankoff, could I, I just missed Counsel Bernard. He had a question under, again, your report is combined with Human Resources and the CAC. Counsel Bernard, just turn on your mic.
No, it, under the Human Resources, I was just gonna to make a comment, and Counselor Yankoff, tell me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is, I know we, Counsel Dron, it's concerned of an MRSB and so on, and, and my understanding is this, there was a number of accusations made against the city. It was eighteen accusations made against the city. None of them have been proven, and that's why this investigation is ongoing. Is that not correct? So we're getting a third-party outside person, whatever you wanna call it, to investigate. All the information will be brought forward to that third party, third party.
Third-party reviewer will be looking at those eighteen allegations that were posed by our former DCAO, correct?
Right, so it's the eighteen, it's the eighteen allegations made against the city that they're reviewing?
Correct.
Correct, okay. That was my understanding. It didn't sound like that's what I was.
That's correct. Counsel Yankoff, wanna go with the first resolution? Richard?
Council Advisory Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Mike Duffy. Resolve that the attached revised 2018-2022 Standing Committees Terms of Reference for Public Works and Urban Bunification and Protective Emergency Services be adopted.
Do you wanna speak to that, Counsel Yankoff?
Just quickly, just wanted to point out, if you hadn't noticed it, there's just one change, and that's the street access bylaw that's moving on to police and, police and protective services.
Okay, so I can call a, question called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, eight zero.
Council Advisory Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Mike Duffy. Resolve that the appointment of Terry Hennessy and Craig Walker as the city of Charlatan representatives on the Charlatan Area Development Corporation, CADC, board be extended until CADC's annual general meeting in 2023.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero.
Council Advisory Committee Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Mike Duffy. Resolve that the appointment of Kent Scales to the Charlatan Airport Authority Board of Directors be extended to December 31st, 2022.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, eight zero.
Council Advisory Committee Resolution Number Four, moved by Counselor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Mike Duffy. Resolve that the appointment of John Abbott, Chair of the Charlatan Civic Center Management Incorporated Board, CCCMI slash East Link Center, be extended to December 31st, 2023.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero. And Counsel Yankoff, that's it? That concludes your report, Counsel Yankoff? Okay, thank you. Okay, move on. I think it's Parks and Recreation, correct? Counsel Bernard, Parks and Recreation?
Thank you, Worship. Our Parks and Recreation Leader Activities Committees did not meet this month, Your Worship. Seniors Engager Committee did meet on July the 6th, and a copy of those minutes will be available. They're not in this package, but they'll be available if anyone requests them. There is one resolution, Your Worship, for council consideration, and I do have some highlights in the department. I give an update to everybody of what's going on with a lot of the projects, Your Worship. So the Wright's Creek Bridge replacement, this project was completed in the middle of July, and included the complete replacement of the old wooden bridge. Scope of the work included the construction of a seventy-five meter, fully accessible timber structure, bridge that permits two-lane traffic with separated active transportation pathway. The bridge connects Acadian Drive, Worship, to the East Royal Park, which is the ninety-area green space, which includes the Acadian Forest Pathway, which has the pedestrian trails and the mountain, mountain biking, and it also connects it to the Parkman Soccer Complex. Sport Field Development, Your Worship, George Smith Ball Field, the sideline fences and the dugouts are now completed. Kiwanis Ball Field, work on the additional dugouts was also completed in July. The West Royal Community Center Multisport Outdoor Facility. I'm not sure if anybody drove by, but it, it looks amazing. It's, it's, kids are playing in it. There's still some work left to be done, which includes site work, asphalt surface, rink boards, engaged landscaping, electrical light features. So that part's done. The remaining work is the asphalt coating, which basically they put a coating over it, they painted, and the fencing and the netting. So it's great to see you drive by there, and the lights are on, the kids are out playing ball hockey and roller hockey, whatever, so it's, it's great to see. The East Royal Lagoon Park property development, the concept plan has been completed. We did have a neighborhood meeting. The public was able to review and provide input. Meeting, Your Worship, went over very well. uh, meeting, Your Worship, went over very well, uh, so there's a concept plan there. Uh, the playground equipment installs, the working, uh, so the twenty twenty-one equipment, as everybody knows, it, it arrived late, as the twenty twenty-two equipment is coming in probably, we're hoping, over November. Um, so right now, J. Frank McCauley, uh, removed and replaced an independent play structure. John Muse Park, installed a small play structure is currently underway. MacArthur Park, starting to build a medium play structure, structure, with install to take place later in August. Lowelland, Mary's Field, Gamwell Parks, uh, to remove and install new swings, and that's scheduled to occur in August and September. And the twenty-two playground equipment, like I was saying earlier, it's, it's been ordered, uh, we're anticipating it arrive again, October, November, so when that comes, uh, there's still some of those installs that we may be able to get out, Your Worship, before, uh, before the snow flies. So other than that, the Simmons Sports Center Replacement Project, you'll see a resolution in the package here. Tender one, T P one steel, uh, building, the pre-engineered building and panels was awarded in May the ninth. That was estimated at that time to be ten to twelve months, Your Worship, for that to arrive, so that's why we got that out the door. Today, you'll see a ward, we're looking for a ward of the Contract Administration Services to engage the firm to prepare for the demolition of the pool, the pool and arena, and to coordinate all aspects of the demolition. So this first part, the demolition for the pool, is anticipated to occur, Your Worship, in, in September. So this passes tonight, we'll get this out the door, two-week waiting period, award it a third week, and then we'll start, you'll start to see demolition of the pool and start moving some earthwork. Um, yeah, so anyway, if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Any questions? Uh, Council Bernard, on the May twenty-fourth meeting that you had at the Malcolm Dare for the Wright's Creek?
The District Park?
Yeah, that's just a concept, correct? That's, yeah, I think that some residents were asking me, it looks like there's gonna be a lot of foot bridges and number of extensions to what's there, so it's just a concept, correct?
Um, we're, we're talking about the District Park where the old lagoon was?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a concept plan.
Yeah, and is there connections to the other side, to Wright's Creek, from, from the, in those drawings? Could you just follow up, or I can send you something?
What do you mean, connections from Wright's Creek?
Like to cross, yeah, to cross, other than the new bridge, the Acadian Bridge, that's, that's already completed.
Yeah.
There's no other plans to extend other foot bridges similar to what we have in Andrews Pond?
Yes, there's one that's, uh, it's, it's, I think it's under construction now, or it's just been awarded. It's, it's one part of the trail, so it's behind the spillway of Andrews Pond.
Okay.
And it's pond north. That trail is, will be completed, the trail work is completed, just the bridge to make the connection over a small stream, that's.
That's it.
And that connection, yeah, so that will go right up into this new, in, uh, new District Park.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll make a lot of the connections, because that's, that's coming from Andrews Pond North and all underneath the tunnel, St. Peter's Road, all leads to that trail.
Okay.
That will come into the, this District Park, which will continue into the, what they call the old landfill site, which there's a concept plan for that, which leads down into the, the new bridge.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard? Uh, sorry, do you have a question? Go ahead there.
Thank you very much for your report, Council Bernard. Could I ask, um, it starts to do with Joe Gis Park, so, um, we had N-Wave in there, and they did their work for the, for the underground stormwater part of that part of the park, and, uh, so the longtime volunteer of that park, Merlene Bryanton, has been asking me a lot of questions, um, and, uh, I guess my point here is, is there some way that we could have staff reach out to her? I, I know the staff are doing a great job of getting things put back, but there was a lot of, there was some damage to signs, and, and, uh, the I O D E contributed a lot to that perk, and, and I just, I'm seeing a little bit of disconnect, um, with, with her questions and, and what's been done. As far as I understand, a lot of what she's been asking is already done, but I think there's a bit of a communication gaps, or maybe Dean or Nancy, or some could reach out to Merlene and just explain where we are so far on, uh, on where, on what has been done and what has to be done. Like, I, I do know, uh, beautification has been done, a couple of staff, I understand that, but, um, and that needs to be portrayed out to the public, that, you know, we're still suffering a bit from COVID, and the delays and hanging baskets and all that type of thing, but, um, you know, the brickwork, the cobblestones, uh, you know, has the grass been trimmed and cut there, um, and have the hedges been replaced, that type of thing. Um, so I'm just wondering, could, could we have staff reach out to her to, to explain all what's been done and what's left to do? Thank you.
Yeah, I have been, and I've been getting the emails from, uh, from the individuals you talk about. I believe the mayor had told her to form them to me, so I've had some conversations with her through email, and, uh, I've also been following up with staff, and I think a lot of the things on our list are done or getting done and near done. Um, so I believe N-Wave was quite a delay, I think that was almost like six months.
Yeah.
But that's not our staff's fault, that's N-Wave, the community fixed that up, and I think there may have been some miscommunication there. Um, so I don't know how much communication our Parks and Rec staff have had, if you're consistent, but I'll find out, and, uh, yeah, we can bring her up to speed for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Richard, open mic.
Parks and Recreation Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor Terry Bernard, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jason Cody. Resolve that the Contract Administration Services for the demolition of the existing infrastructure at Simmons Sports Center be awarded to I B Story Incorporated in the amount of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars plus applicable taxes. Question?
Questions called. All the, oh, question there? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Don't wanna miss anybody, okay? Eight zero. Uh, Council, thank you, sir, thank you, thank you, Mike White, thank you very much. Water and wastewater, this is your department, Richard, Council Daron.
Your Worship, our Water and Sewer Utility Committee, uh, met on July fourteenth, and the minutes are included in the package today. Uh, we do have three very important resolutions for your consideration, Council, and if anyone has any questions, I'll gladly try to answer them, for, for our very intelligent manager. Thank you very much.
I don't wanna ask you questions, Richard, so I'll let you read the resolutions.
Your Worship, Water and Sewer Utility Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor Bob Derrong, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jason Cody. Resolve, whereas the City of Charlottetown awarded Engineering Services Number Three, Eastern Gateway Phase One, in the amount of eighty-five thousand three hundred dollars plus H S T, on July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, to E X P Services Incorporated, and additional engineering services are required for water and sewer infrastructure. Therefore, be it resolved that the contract value for E X P Services Incorporated be increased by fifty-four thousand seven hundred dollars plus H S T.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero.
Your Worship, Water and Sewer Utility Resolution Number Two, moved by Councilor Bob Derrong, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jason Cody. Resolve that the City of Charlottetown accepts the tender from Label Construction in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars plus applicable taxes for trucking services, including material disposal and backfill material supply.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, eight zero.
Water and Sewer Utility Resolution Number Three, moved by Councilor Bob Derrong, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jason Cody. Resolve that the City of Charlottetown accepts the tender from Campbell's Concrete in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and two hundred, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents plus applicable taxes for utility inventory requirements.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero. Okay, thank you, sir, thank you kindly. Next report is Public Works and Beautification. Council Terry McLeod, Ward Two.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Public Works, Urban Beautification, um, did not meet, uh, this month, um, and the Civic Board of Persons with Disabilities did meet on July fourteenth. Uh, I have two resolutions, uh, for consideration, and just wanna, uh, talk a little bit about the Civic Board of Persons with Disabilities area, um, just to highlight that we're, uh, the committee is really active, um, we got a new chair there, and it's great to be able to, to come here and, and just talk a little bit about what they're doing, so, and I also wanna also thank staff. Staff have come in, and we've had I T, Roy, come in to explain a little bit about the loop in here and how that works for those folks. We also, um, Laura was in from, from the Economic Development, explained a little bit about some of the questions they had on accessibility when people book our, our facilities, on what, what, what's in the application and that type of thing, so this, you know, and that there's a whole, a whole little bookwork on that, so they were really pleased to hear that. But the, the big thing is always that we're trying to bring back, we used to have award, disability awards, uh, and we're bringing that back, and it's gonna happen this fall. Um, I hope to get council support, uh, to come to this, uh, it's only a, a short thing, but it's, you know, for these companies and businesses that, within the City of Charlotte and have contributed a lot to accessibility, that's what this is all about, so we recognize them, and it's just a nice, you know, a few plaques given out to those and, and for their recognition of what they do for people with this, with, uh, you know, accessibility issues, so. So anyway, just thought of bringing that up, it's, you know, it's good news, and, uh, when, when we do finally get it finalized, I think we're gonna have ten companies, uh, recognized, so, um, and, uh, you know, there'll be little treats there for everybody as well. Thank you very much, I'll try to answer any questions.
Any questions? Council Bernard from the great Ward, Ward Ten.
Thank you, Your Worship. And Council McLeod, you gave me a great segue to go into these questions, because a couple of months ago, you may recall, I asked the, uh, your Public Works Manager about the tender for the elevator at the Hillsborough Community Center, and my understanding was that that tender was about to go out, and two months later, I still haven't seen it, and I just wondered, I don't know, if you don't have an update now, you can get back to it.
Oh, well, I, just one sec, I believe Mr. Adams is online, so my apologies, folks, for not bringing that up, but he is, I believe, on, on the line. You there, Scott?
Uh, yes, yes, I'm here.
Okay, and you could hear Council Bernard's question?
Yes, yes, I could hear it. Um, I was told it was up last week, I, I unfortunately haven't had a chance to confirm, and I'm, I'm just looking at it right now online, it is publicly posted for engineering services for both our Hertz Hall building upgrade, uh, and, and the moving of that one, and as well Hillsborough Hall, new elevator design. So both those engineering services, R F Ps, are outgraded at the moment.
Yeah, did you hear him?
Not quite, Scott, I think I heard you say that it, it just went online, did it?
Um, I believe they went out last week is when they finally got posted, that's correct.
Okay, do you have an update on the Hertz Hall?
Uh, that is also posted, uh, for engineering services last week.
Good work, Scott, thank you.
No, 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 Council McLeod's ahead of you. Way ahead of you. Richard, and any other questions?
That's, that's.
Another one?
Thank you.
Okay. Richard, ready to go?
Public Works and Urban Beautification Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Mike Duffy. Resolve that as per the conditions of the R F P for Engineering Design Services, City Hall Foundation Underpinning and Masonry Survey, the submission of Kohl's Associates Limited in the amount of thirty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy dollars plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that in the event that more destructive investigation is required, council further authorize an additional fifteen thousand for these services if necessary.
My friend Kevin, Council Ramsey, questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, you got a question? Question?
I do, I do.
You got a, okay, he's got a question. Hold the vote, hold the vote.
Just this, this money's coming out of your current budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, questions called. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Eight zero.
Public Works and Urban Beautification Resolution Number Two, moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Mike Duffy. Resolve that as per the conditions of the R F Q for Speed Humps, the submission of Mallard Forestry Equipment, Inc., in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty cents plus applicable taxes be accepted.
Questions called, and Council, uh, McLeod, you did see some photos that were sent in by a resident at Ward Three. Um, I know in some of the parking lots around the city, they have split, uh, uh, speed humps. I know, I'm not asking that, but can we provide some kind of, Council Duffy said it could be at, at the end for cyclists or scooters, just something to keep in mind?
Thank you very much. What I'll do is I'll, I'll bring that up at our next meeting, which is, we're not waiting for the full, like, until next month, we're gonna pick a meeting here next week, so I'll put that on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions called?
Yes, sir.
Eight, eight, gonna call, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero.
Richard, conclude my report.
Good. Okay. Uh, any new business? No? You sure? We got, we're, we're below three hours, like, you sure you don't wanna stay? Motion to adjourn? Thank you very much. Thank you, and thank you, Richard, job well done.